Good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, April 16th, 9:00 AM. We're calling the Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all members, with the exception of Commissioner Lenzmeyer, are present. He has been able to be here because of medical reasons. We wish him a safe and swift recovery. Please join us as you're able for a moment of silence and pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the back room, I just noticed my microphone was pointed the other way. I've got it now. Our first item today is proclamation of National Animal Therapy Day. We're really excited to have our county attorney, Janelle Kendall, and our own therapy dog, Nova, here. And Janelle will come up in a moment. And to the many members who have come here today to celebrate with us. What you do is important work. It makes a difference for so many people. We thank you. National Therapy Animal Day celebrates therapy animals and other helping animals and their handlers who bring comfort and healing to those in need across the various settings. Locally, Stearns County employs a court facility dog, Nova, to support victims and families interacting with criminal justice system, while the Central Minnesota Therapy Animal Association volunteers in places like nursing homes and hospitals. Research shows therapy animals improve mental wellness and physical health impacting factors such as fear, anxiety, recovery times, and even learning abilities. Court facility dogs are just starting in Minnesota with Nova being the first animal to be allowed to be present with a child victim on the witness stand during trial. Today, we honor therapy and court facility animal handlers and their amazing animals by supporting a proclamation celebrating April 30th as National Animal Therapy Day in our community. I'm wondering, before we get a motion, and then I'll read the proclamation, County Attorney Kendall, do you want to say a few words with Nova? And for the public, we've gotten to do this. This has become an annual tradition. Thank you.
This Great Dane is four times the size of Nova.
For members of the public who cannot see it, we have a dog the size of a tiger and looks like a tiger. We have several awesome, beautiful dogs here today.
And it is Nova's seventh birthday today.
That's great.
Nova is a 43-pound golden retriever. In fact, we call her apartment size, but she fits very nicely under the witness stand, so it works very well. Thank you to the board for your support of this project. It literally took us six years to go through the process and get the dog here to do this, so we are very appreciative of the board's support. In fact, she'll be at our working session later this morning, since we have some exciting things to talk about. But thank you very much for your support of this. As you know, she is the first dog to be allowed on the witness stand while a witness was testifying. She was on the stand for six hours in that case, but going before the Minnesota Supreme Court now to clear the path for other offices to do the same. We very much appreciate the rest of the dogs here that are here today as well.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion, motion or not?
I'll make that motion.
Or do you have something you wanted to say?
I was just gonna say, if we could have the dogs back a little bit, you could see them on the video.
Well, I was hoping when you present, maybe we'd bring them up front.
We could do that, if members are okay with that. That way, the members of the public can see that, so how about if everybody sticks around?
Madam Chair, I'll second that resolution. The Great Dane is a Painesville resident, by the way.
Yes, I was gonna say, we have wonderful therapy animals in this boardroom right now who come from different parts of the county, and so appreciate it again. With a motion and a second, so no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I'm gonna read the proclamation and then have you come up here, and we could get a picture. Janet's here, so that would be great. There are thousands of helping animal teams serving in communities across the United States. And whereas April 30 has been designated as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas therapy and other helping animal teams play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas Nova, Stearns County's court facility dog, helps crime victims and their families cope with stress and trauma involved in the criminal justice process, and whereas therapy animal teams make millions of visits per year in such settings as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice, and whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenges, and those approaching the end of life, and whereas these exceptional animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need, now therefore be it resolved, the Stearns County Board hereby proclaims April 30th, 2024, as National Therapy Animal Day, and the County of Stearns encourage our citizens to celebrate our helping animals and their human handlers. Further, we publicly salute the service of helping animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. And with that, why don't you come up? We'll do a quick picture, and then the public can go ahead and see it.
At least I'm hoping Janet, do you think, yeah, we'll just stand down here?
This way?
Yes.
There's no scaffold over here.
This is probably better than, you know, photo steps.
Oh, pepper, oh.
Wonderful.
More against a dais here.
I know that we've got the tag along the bottom, but it's not up here, so hopefully people can see. We have Nova coming up. Attorney Kendall, do you want to come join us with Nova? I know we have our human companion and handler, but it is your departments.
There you go. Actually, that's much better.
All right. Oh, good. Now everybody can see. See the wonderful? There we go.
Red look. I'm gonna keep snapping, sometimes the dogs are looking.
All right, we good?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks very much.
Absolutely. Thanks, Sue.
And you can watch her.
Thank you. Thank you.
I did make the suggestion that perhaps we could have rotating companions coming that could help us all be in a very good spot. Okay, that was wonderful. All right, our next item is approving the agenda. Are there any changes to this agenda? I should have done that before the awards. I apologize, members. Okay. Like to get a motion or a second on approving the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the agenda is approved. Our next item is the consent agenda. Members, are there any items that you wish to have pulled for further discussion? Members of the public, I am gonna remind you that we all take consent items seriously. We ask questions, if we have them, of staff, and they do a great job of giving us detailed information that you two can see online. Is there anything, otherwise looking for a motion to approve?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch.
One second.
We have a double second.
Give it the drawl.
All right, Commissioner Persky, seconds. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Our next item is administration. Dr. Williams is gonna turn it over. It's, now we're gonna look more at our next steps in our broadband.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Particularly Commissioner Persky and Bertram. I haven't had a chance to see you this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I need to use the screen, so...
Control room, let me control.
We're just pausing a moment to get the map up. We think it helps a lot for people to be able to see what we're talking about, so just a moment, please. Great.
I apologize again for the late information on this, but as you know, the timeframe for this process was really scrunched because of the state grant system coming upon us really quickly. And we had these proposals late last week, and I was conversing with providers all the way up until late yesterday, so... But here you have the map, and we're really talking predominantly about Painesville Township down here and the eastern portion of Wakefield Township and northeastern portion of Luxembourg Township. And they're really the last pieces of participating townships of the whole program. This map looks a little different now because that darker color, you may not have seen this map before, but that darker color now, that's areas that, where there was already service available, rather than showing you what's unserved, because there's not very much unserved, or going to be much unserved anymore, because all the other grant areas are shown there. So what I want to show you is the results of the most recent RFP that we put out, and the decisions that we need today from the board is whether or not to partner with Meeker Electric, which is Vibrant, to provide Painesville Township with fiber to the premise, whether or not to partner with Arvig to cover the Wakefield-Luxembourg Township's sections, and then what percentage to request from the border to border grant. And I think that really depends on whether or not the board's interested in expanding into Rockville and Main Prairie, which are not participating in the program, but Arvig provided a proposal, and I wanted to make sure that you saw that. So we had two proposals, excuse me, to cover Painesville Township, and you can see the summary there, that the proposal from Vibrant-Meker Electric is much less costly than the proposal from Arvig. So you can see, in that instance, they have about a $1.2 million project, and we would need, we could request as little as $536,000 from border to border in the county would be in that for $263,000, and Painesville Township has $35,000 into that project. So I think that's, you know, a clear-cut decision there, pretty, the numbers are pretty telling. In the Wakefield-Luxembourg, we had several proposals last fall, and so we analyzed those proposals last fall, and the board took some action and really said, "We'll do that, but we're not gonna do it now, because we have other border-to-border applications to make. Let's save that till next spring." So Arvig refined their numbers. They're actually, the numbers are a little better than what we saw last fall. So you can see there, it's 113 passes, a total cost of about a million and a half, and we would request from border-to-border 787,000, and we would be in, as they proposed, for 50% at 540,000. So if we did those two, those two as proposed, well, yeah, if we did those two as proposed, one proposed a 45% grant, another proposed 50% grant, if we were successful with those, we would have $367,000 still remaining in the fund from the 16 million. Vibrant proposed to go to, ask for only a 45% match from the border-to-border, because you get a few more points the less you request. And we've been all over the board with our requests in the past. I mean, we've had border-to-border grants at 25%, we've had them at, to keep it right under 40, we had one at 39.6, we had one at 34 to keep it under 35, we had one at 75% as high as that in the low-density program, and we've had some at 50%. And so I just wanted to show you what we would do, what it would look like if we went to 45 with both applications. We could do different. We could do one at 45, one at 50. I didn't think the board would probably be interested in that, but we certainly could do that. So if we did 45%, you can see the county would be at 619,000 with Arvig and 322 with Vibrant, and then we would have remaining 288,000,000 as opposed to the 426, so the cost is $138,000. So that's really the two that we were interested in providing. It fills out, if we're successful with these two, it will fill out all the participating townships. And there has been, you know, interest in others, and I tried to describe that in here. You know, for example, we know that Rune Stone made an application for the Crow River Township. Crow River Township was actually gonna put some money into that. For some reason, they didn't enter into the program here. If we had some money left over, obviously, I think we would partner with them in the future. I've had a couple of ISPs in the past talk to me about the Rockville area, and since they weren't, I never told anybody that we wouldn't entertain a proposal, but I definitely said, "This is our program, and this is our areas of focus." So nevertheless, Arvig did make a proposal to cover, on this map, it's pretty, actually what this, what the first proposal they gave was, would cover all the remaining unserved and underserved in Main Prairie. They just have a band in the northern end, and then a considerable amount of Rockville, which as you know is a city, not a township. Their plan wouldn't go into the, you know, the old city site of Rockville, but it covers, would cover a large part of what used to be township. And that, that would have, and there's, of course, more density there. Well, not of course, but there is more density, because they would go around Grand Lake mostly. That's what increases the density there. And so it does make the per-passing cost less. But if we were to enter, if we were to partner with Arvig on their proposal to do all of that, it would cost the county $263,000 more to cover 417 more parcels. And so I did ask Arvig to bring that as close to no cost to the county as possible, and that's when they came back and proposed basically to go around Grand Lake. And so to go around Grand Lake, they would add another 180, or add 183 locations, so the total of the project would become almost 300, 296. And because of the increased density, it could actually be done with no extra cost to the county. So it's about the same as just doing Wakefield and Luxembourg alone, if we did 50%. Well, actually, if we did 45% too. So we could consider that. You know, we can say it's no cost, but we would have to ask, obviously have to ask more in the border-to-border program, which arguably gives it less chance of being awarded. So I, you know, I think we've given, we've given preference to participating townships in the past and not supported projects outside of participating just because of that reason. But I wanted to make sure the board saw this, we could do it without cost. I did notify the city and the township. I did hear back from the city saying, "Well, you know, we would think about it," but I've been in front of that council on this program in the past and heard their reasons for not participating. It wasn't at this grade of cost, admittedly. So, and then as early as this morning, I was holding a conversation with, or email conversation with Arvig, and just to say, "Well, what if we did something contingent, you know, so we could wait and hear from..." And really, the deadlines are coming so close, even Arvig said, "We really don't have time to, you know, wait a couple of weeks or a week here." So that's what Mark told me, Mark with Arvig told me this morning. So I wanted to give you the whole picture. I think we've got great proposals for the areas that we were intending to cover. You know, it's a good proposal to do the rest, too, but I, we could try to tackle that later as well, so I leave that to you, and I'm happy to try to answer some questions.
So, quick question, and then turn it over to Commissioner Bertram. I've got many questions, but I'm sure that Jeff will cover most of them. A question I have is if we choose not to do the Grand Lake because the city is not participating, will they still go forward with Wakefield?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Bertram?
Madam Chair, Mike, the passes remind me, that's like directly in front of resident?
Yes.
That's a pass.
That's a pass of an underserved or an unserved premise, yes.
And then between the two proposals, Painesville, as you know, was a Johnny come lately, only because as a SNAPO in their organization, they did want to participate and then just drop the ball, so I'm glad that got resurrected. And as you know, I copied you, certainly am encouraging Rockville and Main Prairie to really look at this, because I think it's a missed opportunity for them if they don't. You know, being proactive, this is gonna become more of an issue, in my opinion, in the future, if it isn't already an issue now. So I think, you know, I'm gonna continue to encourage them to take advantage of this program, because I think, you know, again, Stearns County is a big county, and I'm extremely impressed that we got it covered with your work the way we do. So Arvig in the Painesville Township has 132 passes, Vibrant 108. I mean, there's gotta be a reason for that. Obviously, we want to maximize the passes, so if there's a way that you can encourage Vibrant to have, you know, as many passes as it can, and, you know, again, I don't know, that's getting into the weeds, but you maybe know something about that.
Commissioner Bertram, Madam Chair, we did, we did get pretty granular in comparing the two proposals, and I'm confident that actually the Vibrant proposal is gonna cover all the unserved and underserved. If there's even one or two left out, I'm gonna be surprised. So I, we did actually sit down and go through a map and looked pretty carefully at that to make sure that, and sometimes they're using different maps, and the state maps don't always, like, a number of the, what was, appeared to be premises on the state map were actually mobile manufactured homes in a lot. So there's things like that that happen, so I think we're okay.
And Madam Chair, the reason I asked that question is maybe Vibrant didn't see something Arvig did see, and by sharing that with Vibrant, Vibrant obviously is a clearer choice to go with in Painesville Township, but maybe just sharing it with Vibrant, you know, trying to increase the number of passes to maximize that. And then the money that's left, Madam Chair, obviously, we still have, or we may still have in the future, some little pockets, like Zion Township was, where we'll need that to, you know, finalize onesies, twosies if we have to at some point, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Notch?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would, I guess, concur with doing the 45% option with Wakefield-Luxembourg and then Vibrant on Painesville. I'd be hesitant to do the Grand Lake-Main Prairie without buy-in, because obviously we told all the other townships, you know, if you buy in and help the cause, we're gonna try and get this done. I think it would not look very good on our part if we let them in with no.
Yeah, on that point, so remind, you probably already said it earlier in this meeting, when is this due?
May 14th or 15th.
I wonder if we could do a motion that has contingent approval for them, should they financially participate in some way prior to whatever drop-dead date you say there is?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and that's what I was trying to verify with Arvig this morning, was whether or not they really were willing to give a little more time, and, you know, the answer I got was, "We don't have a week."
Okay.
I mean, you could do that, and if it happens, fine, but I, that's just the reply I got.
And Madam Chair, the deadline is May 14th or whatever that is.
For the grant applications.
But for Arvig, what's their drop-dead date?
Well, that's why.
Sounds like they're saying today.
Yeah, they're saying we really don't have any more time.
Could we still?
I mean, you could do it, and.
Right, and then see if they're willing to give the city another, I mean, it'd be great to do that. It would be fabulous, make a difference. Commissioner Persky?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I would like to echo the support for Rockville in making that happen, because the school district, I would hope, would also be very encouragable to do that, because you have the haves and the have-nots, and also just dealing with snow days, an opportunity is to, you know, have school from home, and those kids would not have that opportunity if they don't have service.
Right, and to that end, homework. Almost all homework now requires the ability to download videos. Commissioner Bertram and then Notch, sorry.
Madam Chair, Mike, why did they say, the reason I asked when to drop date, and I know you said you met with them, but with my email encouraging them to look at it, and if we maybe had an informal meeting, and we, meaning you and me, with them, again, sometimes some of those elected officials maybe don't see the bigger goal, and maybe it helps to connect the dots a little bit. What was the reasoning in Rockville's case not to participate?
At the, Madam Chair, Commissioner, I attended a council meeting, and we were, they were considering a much bigger dollar amount at that time, too, so we need to understand that. But as I recall, they were, they, the conversation was, "Well, we already have a number of residents that have high-speed internet, and we didn't contribute to that, so to treat people equally, you know, I don't know that we should get into that," is kind of what I heard from the dais that night.
Madam Chair, the investment is pretty minimum.
Yeah, what I proposed to them here was, you know, what we did with townships was $350 per passing, so it, you know, if you did the whole project, there probably would be a little cost to the county if they just did the Grand Lake one, you know, it would work out.
To the city is what I'm asking.
To the city, yeah.
Oh, to the city. You said to the county.
Yeah. No, no, if we did the whole Main Prairie and, and the Rockville project, we'd need participation from both Main Prairie and Rockville, and there might still be a little cost to the county.
And what would the participation cost be from those two? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Oh, with the.
It's pretty minimal.
Yeah, it was over $100,000 for the city, and I want to say 19 or 20 for the township.
I mean, overall, for what they're getting, Madam Chair, it's a.
This should be a no-brainer.
If there's a way that we can maybe try to meet, even if it's not at the actual official meeting, just with the chair of the township and, you know, the mayor of the city and with the administrator who did respond yesterday, I think we should try to do that.
Well, and Commissioner Notch, I haven't forgotten you, from an application standpoint, their participation actually may be make or break them getting the money. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to confirm that the buy-in would be the same rate as what we had been going, which was the 350. going, which was the 350. Maybe going back, remember the Munson Township issue, is that, is that any possibility there?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Williams.
Commissioner Notch, yes, and we did have a conversation about that too. There's enough parcels that I don't think there was interest in doing that.
Okay.
With Arvic, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
And how Arvic is going to do that now is, is they're just going to, well, to remind you, you know, to do one of the projects, Arvic had to pass, was passing through a township that didn't participate and, you know, they were reluctant not to serve people at, with that and that makes sense. And so they're going to, they were going to give back to the fund $500 per passing, $500 per premise that participates, that, that takes the service and that'll go back into our fund. So that's how we solved that problem. Same with the line that went through Crow River Township with Runstone. They're like, we're building a line, you know, it'd be crazy not to, and so those are the kind of agreements that we made.
So right now before us, we have the proposal to, I'm hearing people say the no-brainer part of Vibrant, doing Painesville Township, Arvic doing Wakefield, Luxembourg, and then interest in at least contingently approving the Round Lake if they participate in some way financially. Rockville, sorry, I don't know why I said Round Lake.
And Main Prairie.
Yep. So do we want to make a motion? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it with a.
Yes, with a question in case we need to clarify anything. Go ahead, Commissioner Notch.
Just on the Vibrant and the Wakefield Luxembourg is 45% level, right?
Right. And I'm sorry, I forgot to say that as we were talking, as everybody, will you include that in your motion at 45%?
And then Grand, while Rockville and Main Prairie would be only if they're willing to participate at the same level as others.
Correct. Okay, so we've clarified that. Any other questions or comments?
Just.
We need a second.
I second it.
He's seconded.
Okay, good.
Just two points, Mike. See if we can meet with the Main Prairie Township Supervisor Chair and the city sooner than later. I mean, just one last, I think it's worth one last direct conversation. And then the other thing would be, of course, it's a senior moment, I forgot the other thing.
I think we'll, I think we'll be okay if for some reason it's helpful to have somebody else who I'm happy to participate as chair, but I think you're right, Commissioner Bertram, that one, one last going back, reminding them that this is something, honestly, the state is going to have, they're going to start working on the BEAD funds and it's going to start looking a bit different than some of these have been, so hopefully they would agree to be doing that for the difference they'll make. And if, I'm quite confident both of you would share this, but that we all really would like to see them participate. We are, we're willing.
Madam Chair, also, you know, I mentioned the importance to the school district, but, you know, this town and the townships also are looking for growth. And I think that's something that homeowners or builders would look at is, you know, what opportunity do I have to be connected? I could work from home if I had.
That's so true. And having represented Rockville in the past, they do have one of the biggest amount of miles of roads for a community of their population, which means they have a lot of space to grow, right? Commissioner Bertram?
How many townships, it came back to me, how many townships did not participate? Out of 30, are there 36 townships, I think? Who did not participate? Or I shouldn't say who, I'd like to know that, but how many?
How many?
There was 23 participating, but there was, there's a handful that really didn't need to participate because they already had good service. So there's, I don't have the map up for you anymore, there's, you know, there's an obvious five or six that could have benefited from it, but didn't.
And again, Madam Chair, your point is well taken. I mean, everybody looks at it, you know, local government looks at it very, very close and then we look at it a little bit more globally. We can see the need of being, you know, created, as Commissioner Persky said, more homes or what have you. And so it is kind of on us, at least, and you've done a great job of doing it, getting the word out there and getting the messaging out, and now is certainly the time to do it, if you're going to do it. The need for this is going to be, again, as I said earlier, even greater in the future than it is now.
Yes, Commissioner Bertram, and reinforcing what Commissioner Persky, and you just said, if they want to grow, they need to get fiber. I mean, it's just pretty much that blunt. The next, we're at 5G, but it's going to get to be more and more and what the needs are for folks. And this is, this are quick speeds, the providers are providing affordable options, which many of the constituents in these areas do not have right now. They're slow and expensive, so it does behoove them. Thank you for this great work and hopefully they will decide to do it. I'm going to go ahead and call, or see no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, this is approved.
Thank you.
Dr. Williams, did you, as we, I know we're going to be able to adjourn pretty quickly here, did you want to do anything about a couple of the legislative updates? I know you've been working on the sales tax, among others, I think a lot of people have been working, we can do that really quickly as part of the issues, like Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I did spend some time recently on the local sales tax issue. As I recall, I served on the task, local sales tax task force, say that 10 times fast. And the, the House did, the House Tax Committee reviewed a bill proposed by Chair Gomez last week. That, that bill was considerably different than what the task force recommended, but the most glaring omission was it did not allow county justice facilities, jails, courts to, to, to be funded with local sales tax. I have heard from Matt Mossman just this morning that Chair Gomez is going to add those to the bill.
That's great.
So that was good news. The Senate is, is Senate Tax Committee chaired by Ann Rest is talking about that, about her bill this morning. That bill very much follows the task force recommendations to the point where it includes jail justice facilities. It includes the ability on the, on your referendum question to say the services within these facilities are mandated, things like that. So it's a, it's a bill that very much does follow the task force, so appears like both of those will end up in the ominous bills and into a committee. Was there, was there another one you were interested in?
Actually, Dr. Williams, I was trying to remember, does, does that bill or perhaps the House, would it afford an opportunity to do something with, from a mental health standpoint, if at some point a county or a cluster of counties would want to? Do you think it would come within that?
I don't, I don't think it would fit within, obviously, it would be regional, which would be helpful, but I don't know that would fit within the current criteria for, for not going through the legislature.
Okay.
Obviously, anything that doesn't fit those criteria, you could still go for legislation, special legislation to impose it.
Right, okay. Well, knowing that there is a number of items we could be talking about, I, there's one that kind of dovetails off of that. As members, you know, I've served on the, what the state called the Priority Admissions Task Force. Counties call it the 48-hour rule, really has to do with the desperate need there is to be having more state capacity for beds and community capacity for people with, who have significant mental health needs that are frankly languishing in our jails right now. And our jail staff are amazing and a jail is not a place for people who have mental health needs, nor is a hospital emergency department. The challenge right now is there is not money in what they refer to as the tails and the out years. They don't have a whole lot of one-time money. It's been very frustrating because the Department of Human Services has been doing swaps, basically. They're saying, oh, we're going to take off these 48 beds and then we'll add 16 over here and then we'll put in eight for kids, which is also really important, but not what this, this bill is about. But it, the math, even my kindergarten granddaughter could almost get to, that math doesn't work. That would be less capacity, not more. So there's been a lot of work. I wanted to do a shout out to Julie Ellis from our Human Services Department because they've been trying to come up with more ways to use one-time money, including hello, let's do some planning for building, which is what happens in higher ed and on roads and bridges all the time. So that's kind of the status. So we both, I would say, are, together, we are opposing the, the truth that they are not going to be doing anything more and yet working to try to have some things that will at least not harm, but maybe move some opportunities for people who need and deserve treatment forward and that will lower cost to counties while we really look at next session. So that would be kind of one of the other big ones that's been coming up. And yes, they are meeting again today as well. There's a few other things that we all have been contact about, including the one that relates to deer hunting that honestly, after spending a lot of time talking to Jeff Howe and to Chan Van Heck and a few others, the data is confusing. There is currently a few counties because of some, an agreement that happened a couple of years ago that would be exempt from a change. At this point, my understanding, the original line had to do with herd control. There's questions going back and forth about safety and in case any member of the public is wondering why I'm even bringing this up, because in general, we do not have anything to do with any of this is because of a few counties having been removed. It appears it is going to be done in the House this year and that it very well could pass entirely, no matter what, by next year. So Senator Howe has sent some data, which I'll forward to you all, and I think we've got a lot of questions, but it may be that as things keep going, that there is, it's just, I would say, a little confusing about whether or not we actually do have a role in this right now and there's good heads thinking about it. So I'm just going to say that out loud. Anybody else have any other legislation they've been following right now that they want to make sure is brought up?
On that point, Madam Chair, the only thing that I think would be helpful would be, the issue's not going to go away, it may not be dealt with this year, but I do believe it would be helpful because as you, I have some questions, it would be helpful to have a discussion that we better understand it here in Stearns County and formulate, kind of the start formulating, because I don't think it's going anywhere, as you said. However, at some point, I think we should have a discussion on if it should or how it should or what our participation in that should be. And by bringing in folks that know a lot more about it than I do, that would be helpful.
And I both share that in my head and also it's like, okay, really both, there are parties who are saying this is all about safety and the real question might be, what the heck is going on? But maybe DNR, that at some point, it would be useful to get some information from them because there is a legitimate, more than legitimate safety concern. I shared Mr. Van Heck's initial what? And then after talking with Senator Howe and seeing some of the data, but not all of it, it is not that cut straight forward and it does reinforce why perhaps in general they've got broader ways of looking at this and how on earth with a patchwork would this actually get done. Having said it, I, as a, as an individual, I have talked now with both senators saying what? So I think we'll figure, figure something out to get us more information, whether it's in case we need to do something now or something in the future, because I think we all care about this issue. So, did you have something?
I just, I just want to echo what you're saying, that it's more than a safety issue. There's a number of issues behind the scenes too that are going on with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's go ahead and move to issues by Commissioner, Commissioner Bertram?
Nothing real dramatic, other than just on a, on a regional, there were several people in the Spring Hill area that died suddenly and young, that just was devastating the last few days. And it's, you know, we tend to forget about the social issues with, with communities and people and just being there with the people. I mean, this is far beyond government, far beyond anything that we can do, but it kind of reminds you about life and our priorities in life. And I guess, I know you would share your thoughts and prayers with those families that have had to deal with that, but just, I guess, a special thought for, for those families.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Persky?
Yeah, Jeff, tragedies always kind of bring us back to a reality check. Just one thing, this Thursday, we have Township Annual Meeting out in Freeport, so if there's any folks that have particular issues, they want to contact their Township Supervisor and they relay those interesting things on to us. Also, there's going to be a very good chicken dinner, one of the benefits that I see as Commissioner annually, so I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, I have nothing.
Madam Chair, I was going to ask them, what's on the menu?
I, I was going to bring up the Township meeting, I'm glad you got to, but I have to admit, I probably would not have brought up the chicken dinner.
Well, that is the closest to my grandmother that I, that I have memories of.
Yes, and I think, I think the public should know a couple times a year now, you will have gotten your grandmother's chicken dinner.
Yes, and it reminds me of picking rock out there at the farm, so.
Well, there you go.
It's that season.
It is that season, so yes, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Persky, Commissioner Notch.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I guess I, for one, would like to applaud Mike too on, you know, his work on the task force. I mean, that was, you know, a great recap that you had sent out, which seems to maybe have edged it in the right direction. The other thing is, well, tomorrow I have dairy, Terrell and I have dairy advisory. And then the other thing I was going to mention, I don't know if you heard, but Meeker County had an avian flu outbreak in the turkey farm, which affects 70,000 turkeys, so it's back again, so I guess we'll probably be hearing from Aaron if it creeps up into Stearns County.
Absolutely, thank you.
So let's hope that's the extent of it.
Yeah, let's hope that is the extent and Stearns County has a lot to be proud of with the way our emergency management folks work with our public health and our school districts, our townships and our cities when things like this come up. Just in case somebody listens and they have seen something, there has been a question asked to us about have we started to see any dairy being infected because there was another place in the country? So far, we have not heard of any, but we are going to be bringing that up at Dairy Advisory tomorrow. Well, Mr. Schrifels or Dr. Williams, anything else?
Okay, seeing none, we are going to adjourn to reconvene in room 499 for the work session regarding our Jail Justice Center project following this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.